So, welcome everybody to this historic last meeting. Oh geez. Rita is our town administrator.
It's been nice. Very nice. I will miss it and I won't miss it. You know? Yeah, well, I mean, no meeting should really, you know, ever commence without the appropriate gift.
Yes, there you go.
Someone's let out my secret.
We, it's not a secret.
Yeah. We're not advertising for drinks, yeah?
Yeah. For anybody who would like to purchase these lovely drinks, cakes, and yodels, certainly we promote them here in the town of Lakeville.
When I retire, do I get no bones?
Yeah, you're getting no bones, yes. You might eat those on camera too, I'm not sure. That might happen. So anyways, welcome. It's July 29th, it's 3:00 PM, and we are at the police station. We have LakeCam recording. It appears as though nobody else is recording. So, the first item on our agenda is to meet with Josephine Ruth Witz from the Middleborough Housing Authority regarding the next lottery for the residences at Nemasket River. So give it a whirl, welcome.
You don't, you usually have a podium, I don't have a podium.
You know, you're perfectly content to sit there if you'd like.
So, we're doing the second lottery over by the transit station. This is the residents at Nemasket River. There's going to be seventeen affordable townhouses and duplexes, and they're for sale at $180,750. It's been out about three weeks, we don't have any applications yet. The applications are due on September 18th. People that live or work in Lakeville, or have a job offer to work in Lakeville, are considered local preference, and they get the first priority. The last lottery, we didn't have anybody from Lakeville, so I really wanna push this for Lakeville residents, part-time town employees, full-time town employees. So the income limits are, let's see, for a family of three, it's $66,600. For a family of four, $74,000. Family of five, $79,950. And a family of six, $85,850. So that's decent money. We qualify for income in family size, so your income, if you're a family of six, can't go over the $85,000. You do have to have a preapproval letter from a bank in order to be in the lottery, and that's probably the most important thing. You have to have sufficient income to qualify for a mortgage. Most people working are going to qualify. The biggest thing is they might be over income. But it's very important to get your application in as soon as possible, so if we see something in the application that you haven't submitted, we can give you a heads-up, say you still have, you know, a couple of weeks until September 18th to get the final information. Maybe what, we happened to a couple people gave us a pre-qualified letter from a bank the last time, and it has to be a preapproval. There's a big difference. It is anticipated that you're going to be signing the mortgage and taking ownership within about two months after the lottery. The lottery is scheduled for October 9th at 2:00 PM. We have two more information sessions. One will be on the, at the library this week, Thursday night at 6 o'clock, and then next Thursday at 6 o'clock at the Middleborough Housing Authority. I think that's it. Applications are available at the library right now and our office. People can email us at housing@middleboroughha.org, and I will email them an application directly, or they can pick it up, or they can call the office at 508-947-3824, and we can either mail or email it to them.
Great. So, great opportunity for, you know, our, you know, low-income residents, or, you know, what qualifies as low-income residents in Lakeville, I should say, or the surrounding areas, really. We'd love to see more Lakeville residents take advantage of it, so...
I don't think I mentioned you're all three-bedroom, two-and-a-half baths.
It was very dramatic when you mentioned it.
Can't really shut it off.
Like a soap opera, dude. It's nice.
That's where it's gonna be down there. And garages.
Yes.
Do they all have garages?
They don't all. So the townhouses do not have garages, but they have four levels, and the lower level, a lot of them have walkout basements, so that can be a rec room, family room, whatever they want. But the duplexes, they have one or two-bedroom, two-car, one or two-car garages.
And they're all three-bedroom?
Yes, they're all three-bedroom, two-and-a-half baths.
Did you have any trouble selling the first half a dozen? You did half a dozen, I think.
No, six. So, we had to postpone the application due date a week because we only had five applications, and then in that last week, we got three more, so we did end up with eight applications for the six units. And at this time, only one has signed a purchase and sale, and the other five are waiting for different things. The units are not all complete yet for the first phase, Nemasket River Landing, but seventeen is a lot more than six units, so I'm anticipating it's going to be tougher. So, we've given, you know, we've sent it out, we're required to do it to all minority publications like El Mondo and Cabo Verde Online, and there's a bunch of them. We've given them to, like Massasoit, any housing authorities that have Section 8, in case they might have people that were interested. About 150 agencies we've sent the information to.
Did we do a press release in the McGee Gazette?
Yes, been the last two weeks, it was in the Gazette.
I saw that in the Gazette. I guess the disappointment is if you had six units, you only got eight applications.
Absolutely.
So if you have seventeen, are you gonna get twenty-one, or are you gonna get ten? Who knows?
Yeah, wherever. So, one of the requirements of the 40R program and the 40B program is if we don't have at least seventeen applications, we'll have to put off the application date, and if we put it off, we might have to put off the lottery date.
Mr. Golds don't like to hear that because they're dying to have these occupied so they can move on to the next phase.
Right, exactly. So, they can't get funding for Phase Two until they finish Phase One.
Should we have broken it into a smaller group, like, whatever the group, should we have broken it into a group of ten? How do we come to seventeen, I guess, because we'll have this the next time?
Seventeen is, that's, so you have to have, is it twenty percent?
Twenty-five, yeah.
So you have to have that, and, so this is Bob Bellucci's project, and he has three phases in this, so, I don't remember, I think there's three units in his first phase, and maybe four in his second, and then the ten are in the last one.
Right.
So I'm anticipating the last phase will probably not be signing a mortgage until the beginning of the year, at the earliest, probably more towards April. But everybody is in this lottery.
And I think we might have more applications because this round has duplexes and garages, and the others were John's and Joe's townhouses.
Yeah, exactly. Some people specifically wanted the duplexes, so they did not apply to Nemasket River Landing. But, anything you suggest for me, even, you know, after this meeting, on where we should get the word out more? We will be putting it on Lakeville Helping Lakeville and Middleborough Helping Middleborough again, probably next week or the week after. It seems like as soon as we do, we get a bunch of interest. We haven't received any applications, but application requests, so we've probably sent out thirty already, and then we'll do it again and see if we generate more interest.
Certainly scanning this, and I've read the paper, you know, about the availability, but this really earmarks, you know, the sizes, the square footage, I mean, it's a pretty good deal that you can get close to 2,000 square feet of a new place for $180,000.
Absolutely.
So, I don't know, although you're gonna put it in, Lakeville Helping Lakeville, probably scanning this entire page would be helpful.
It is. It has already been put on, I think on the 12th, July 12th, it was put on. But we will be doing it again.
Good.
All right. So our second item on the agenda is not the 315, so we believe these. So we're gonna jump to item number three, which is to review and vote to approve a purchase and sale agreement extension and a vote to sell to 96 Bedford Street. So, we have a request in front of us, since it's taken a little bit longer to move out of this lovely location across the street, that we have pretty much a 30-day extension request from the attorney on the other side, on the purchaser's side. So, we have in front of us a purchase extension, and we also need to make a particular vote to actually sell at this meeting. So, I will make a motion that we approve both the extension for 30 days through August 30th, 2019, to sell, and that the board also, in the same motion, will vote to approve to sell to 96 Bedford Street.
Second.
And authorize the town administrator to sign any and all agreements to effectuate such transaction.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Agenda item number four, this could take a little bit of time, so let's just go to agenda item number five, just to kind of skip over that. So, agenda item number five is a vote to proclaim that August 3rd, 2019, be Catherine Diaruda Day in honor of her 100th birthday. So, she turned 100 on April 2nd. Her family has requested proclamation in honor of her 100th birthday, which is attached. So, John, you're gonna present the proclamation to the senior center, August 2nd, at 10:00 AM. Representative Oral will also present a proclamation from the State House. So, I think, John, if you wanna just, you know, we can put the motion in and second it, but I'd like for you to kind of read a little bit about this, so I'll make the motion.
Second the motion.
So, and then if you wanna read some words, then we'll vote.
Yep. So, I can read about the attachment, is that okay?
Yeah.
So, I've been asked by the Diaruda family to do that. That's why I'm doing it at the senior center, because I was somewhat involved in helping them do various things over the last 20 or 30 years. They live right by the, almost by the opening of the Ted Williams Camp off of Precinct Street. He was one of the ones that did all those shrubberies, did them into battleships and things like that. So, anyways, that's why I was asked by the Diaruda family. So, just to mention Catherine Diaruda, had lived in Lakeville for 50 over 100 years. She was married to a husband Dennis for 73 years, who passed away at age 97. I'd suggest if the house goes up for sale, someone buy it. If the guy lived to 97, and she's living over 100, it's probably a good house. Catherine has five children, eight grandchildren, 11 great-grandchildren, and four great-great-grandchildren. She has always been very involved with her family, traveling every weekend to Boston to visit the family. Catherine was born in Southie, and comes to Billy Belger as an old friend. He lived a little bit less than she did. During World War II, Catherine served our country as one of the famous Rosie Ribeters, working in both the Charleston and South Boston shipyards. After moving to Lakeville, Catherine worked at the Golden Spur Restaurant in the former Lakeville Hospital, where she retired from. She is a member of St. Martha and Mary's Church. Catherine has enjoyed visiting the Council of Aging and frequently participated in trips hosted there. She is also a volunteer with the Friends of the Council of Aging and with the food pantry in Middleborough. Catherine loves life, her family, her best friend Jack, her Jack Russell terrier, who bucks, and anyone that comes to the house. She is thankful for many dear friends over the years. Today, we honor Catherine as being one of the, Lakeville's oldest residents celebrating her reaching the age of 100, and wishing her well in the future.
All right, so you have a moment and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Must be 315. It is, look at that, 315. All right, so, David, we are here to hear from you a little bit about increasing some of the fines for violating our dog laws, as the state did overall in 2018, and we have some leeway here, so give us your opinion on these and what you wanna do.
Right now, okay, excuse me, right now, the first offense is free, second offense is 15, third offense is 25, and fourth is 35, and it just stays at 35. The state wants, would go up to first offense 50, 100 per second, and 300 per third, and 500 for fourth, but that's way too much, so. We worked on with Rita and Tracy to, you know, like, come up with another plan, because I think if you go up to 500, you're gonna keep the dog. You'll be keeping a lot of dogs.
And these are for any of the violations, things that we incur, you know, either leash laws, or, you know?
Just mostly leash law.
Okay.
Because they're not, we got signs over, like, over at Mass Swamps School that says no dogs at all, and you wouldn't believe how many people I sat there watching, walking in there, letting dogs out in there.
Yeah, and this has nothing to do with the licensing fees that are set by the town.
It's just, but, 'cause the state went up on their end of the deal, and they expect that's to go up some. So now, the first offense would still be no fine, second offense would be 15, third offense 25, and fourth and continuing would be, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's the count, that's the one.
Yeah. Second, first offense would be free, second offense would be 25, third 50, and fourth and continuing would be 100.
Now, is that the fine on the owner or the dog?
For the owner.
Like, you know, what if someone has two dogs, right?
Dog wallet?
Like, curious, right?
Also, if they had two dogs, right, you're free?
Yeah.
It would still be one.
That's, you wouldn't fine for both dogs?
Well, we've never had that, you know, never had that problem.
You know, not hypothetical, you never know. Someone could have a pack of dogs, so you just let go, so does that mean they're already on your dog?
It is true, never had that problem ever.
Six dogs off-leash.
How many people go to the fourth at $35, ready?
Yeah, a lot of them.
Okay, so, that's really the question.
For leash law, maybe, maybe?
What's that?
Leash law?
It's the leash law.
Yeah.
I had one, I really had to go, like, extreme. He took the dog off the front of me and asked me what I was gonna do. He said, "What are you really gonna do to me?" He was in Ted Williams, I gotta restrain him on the road.
Then he pulled out a milk bone and...
He's got no trust. He has no trust, bastard.
Could happen.
So Ted Williams isn't...
Leash-free.
Leash-free. You can bring dogs here, but if they're on a leash.
You can bring them, and you pick up after yourself.
Right.
But the school, there's no dogs that are allowed at all, and they just go walking in there with dogs. I mean, you can see the signs, they're walking by the sign.
Yeah, I mean, I know a lot of times people will bring their dogs to Ted Williams, and they let them run in that Little League field that has the fencing.
Or they'll put them into the...
Because they can close it off so they won't lose the dog, which is fine.
But they use them in the horse school pits and stuff like that, you know, for like, their own private...
Great place to find dog waste.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's the problem, is they're not cleaning up after them.
No, they're not cleaning up, and they provide them with bags there.
Just laying on the ground.
Ted Williams does, they're going out of their way.
So how do you want to promote these changes? How do you wanna just make sure people are aware of them? They'll go on our website and...
Right, I would put it on the website so that people can't say they didn't see it.
And trust release in the McGee Gazette, if whoever reads that.
Let people know that you've gotta be responsible with your dogs.
I just have a question. On this page that we have citing in the law, the first page, where it says new law, is that literally coming from the state?
That's coming from the state, the new law.
Okay, because there was a part that was a little confusing. It says, "Notwithstanding the foregoing procedure and schedule of fines, but subject to all the provisions of the section, city or town may by ordinance or by law provide for alternative procedure, but provided however, that the fines shall not be lower than those stated in this section." Doesn't specify this. Is it this section or our town bylaw section? Because if it's this, the state bylaw, then we are lower than the state.
We are lower than the state bylaw.
Even though it says the fines shall not be lower than those. So that's my question right there, because it's an excerpt here, and I didn't have a chance to look it up.
So then we could do a bylaw, city or town may by, for an alternative.
Yeah, so I just don't wanna go through all this work and then find out that...
Do we have, we have a bylaw, right?
Yeah, we have our own bylaw, so we don't have to do the states. We can, you know, we just go, we don't have to work to what they wanna go up to. That's kind of ridiculous.
Establishing.
500 dollars.
Yeah, my only question is where it says here, this section, is it referring to this section of the state bylaw, or this section of our local bylaw?
That's how I read it, too, but if you guys wanna do...
So, I mean, I don't wanna see the fines go up as high as the state, but I just want clarification as the only thing.
You wouldn't even get it, they wouldn't even come back with the dog, it's 300.
Right, exactly.
300.
Yeah, I mean, you get to hold the dog for 500 bucks and spay or neuter it, too.
Right.
You have more cost on that, you're not gonna get a dog.
Because the town has a bylaw.
I just don't wanna do this and then find out that we're quoting the bylaw.
Yeah, we can check with Greg.
Yeah, check with Greg.
Do you want to prove it? Otherwise, pending Greg, or, or do we just wanna check with Greg and Table?
You can do a quick check, but it says by and on, so bylaw provide for an alternative procedure, so we provide for an alternative procedure.
Right.
We're different fine, so I think you're allowed to do it.
Yeah, so as long as that's...
What you'd need to do on a bylaw.
Right, I'm okay with these amounts, and I think these amounts are, are pretty good, because you're right, if you find too much, people are gonna be like, whatever.
I think if you want, even though second, the third offense is 300, they wouldn't come back.
Yeah.
All right, so, Table, I'm just waiting. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
All right, agenda item number four, this is a review of proposed policy for road cuts for utilities. So, we had asked to have a policy draft on a bylaw to handle road opening permits such that we don't have to have those in front of us, such that they may not hold up construction in a routine form. So, town administrators have put together...
Well, I'm worried.
This is my first one, so be gentle.
So I won't correct any type of vote.
Oh, there's a few I've seen now.
So, anyways, I don't know if you guys had a chance to take a look at this, if you have any questions on it. I was fine with this.
I think you, right, I think you did what I asked you to do in section two, that this is one to three road opens, but the big logic's still somewhat coming around for a minute.
Yeah, and the one, the one thing I added in from looking at other towns was if the road has been resurfaced within the last five years, permit will not be approved for routine installations. Yeah, because we don't wanna break up our brand-new roads.
And, just so happens, we did just get in, they wanna cut 300 feet of roadway. It just came in from, I can't remember if it was Comcast, or, they wanna cut up the road for 300 feet for multiple, so that one won't be coming before you. I don't even remember.
I didn't see that one. I haven't seen it.
Yeah, it was, timing was everything. Either Columbia Gas or one of the...
Yep, there is one error on this, that's not just a typo, it's an actual error. After the appeal, any person aggrieved to denial, that should say road opening and not curb cut on the last page.
Yep. All right, so, I will make a motion that we approve said policy for road cuts for utilities.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, agenda item number six, this is a vote to proclaim August 1st, 2019, as Antonio Amaral Day in honor of his retirement. So, we have a proclamation to be read. John, you wanna read it?
Sure. Proclamation, and Tony had a fabulous retirement party back a week or so ago. So, whereas Tony Amaral has loyally served the town of Lakeville, Massachusetts for the past 26 years as a Lakeville police officer, and whereas acting in his capacity as a Lakeville police officer, Officer Amaral specialized in motor vehicle law and highway safety, and whereas Officer Amaral was the department's motor officer, ensuring the safety of fellow officers with the upkeep of equipment and vehicles, and whereas Officer Amaral's knowledge and experience in police work will be missed by his fellow officers, and whereas, whereas upon Officer Amaral's retirement, his work ethic, knowledge, and experience in police work, as well as his friendship, will be missed by all who have had the pleasure of working with him over the years, and now therefore be it resolved that the selectmen in the town of Lakeville, Massachusetts do hereby proclaim August 1st, 2019, as Antonio Amaral Day, and the selectmen do hereby request that all citizens applaud Antonio Amaral for his many years of service to the town, and that all citizens wish him well as he moves on with the next chapter in his life. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen and the citizens of Lakeville, this resolution is signed, sealed, and delivered on this 29th day of July in the year of 2019 by the Lakeville Board of Selectmen, Marion Holbeck Chairman, John Hawley, and Leah Fabian.
All right, there's a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If I can just please note, too, I didn't bring it to the swapman before he retired because his retirement party was a surprise, so...
All right. Agenda item number seven, this is a vote to designate Maureen Candido as the serpent representative, so the term to expire May 22nd, 2020. I will make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This one is a fan favorite. This is a vote for reappoint Kevin Bernardo as the inspector of milk. So, now that the board is, I guess, we're now responsible for the Board of Health Reorganization's approval of somebody to be inspector of milk, so I'll make a motion that we reappoint Kevin Bernardo as the inspector of milk with a term to expire July 31st, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion?
Does he have to go to the foms, Nate, or this is just a look at the date codes at the schools?
It's a state manate, it's a sniff test.
There you go. If it smells bad, it's bad.
That's it.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item number nine, this is a review and vote on the revision to the Master Plan Implementation Committee charge, and probably a use of a new non-metal staple system. Do you like it?
That's a new platform.
Ooh, look at that.
It does come apart, but I don't wanna be done.
All right, so, at the board's last meeting, Rita was reappointed to the MP as the town administrator's designee. Patrick Marshall was reappointed as the open space committee's designee. However, Patrick Marshall's no longer on the open space committee, so therefore we need to update the charge with the proposed changes in red on this black and white document.
That's crazy. You're just colorblind, Nancy.
You didn't know. All right, so, what the changes happened today is down in the last paragraph, it says the committee will consist of a member of the planning board, the town administrator, or their designee, a member of the open space committee, or their designee, a member of the conservation commission, and three members at large. So that is the motion to amend the MP's charge that I made.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, we have a couple things on here. The next one be being the scheduling of September and October select meetings. So I am just gonna jump to just one other thing with any other business, because I am submitting my resignation from the board effective September 8th, so this will be up to you guys to decide when you want to meet with regard to the board. So, you guys can kind of take that and schedule it, whether you'd like to do so.
Julia, what time would you like the earliest that you can give it to?
Come September, the earliest is probably like 5:00 o'clock.
Schedule in 5:00 PM?
Yeah. I was working on the boiler today.
September 9th and 23rd, October 7th and 21st at 5:00 PM at the new police station, if possible. That's it.
All right, so, agenda item number 11, this is a review and vote to approve the selecting meeting minutes of June 24th, 2019. So, I had no changes to this meeting minutes, so I will make a motion to approve said minutes. So I will make a motion to approve said minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item number twelve. Do we have any new business?
I do. Sorry, your announcement just threw me a little thing off.
Yes.
Actually, I would like Lorraine Reeves...
Put that on another agenda. What, what? The replies to what we do.
Yes, my daughter's birthday. Yeah, we will have, we will have an agenda strictly around your discount muffin. Now, Lorraine has something she'd like to add. It wasn't in the file, because Rita kept peeking in the file. So we had to...
You peeked. Yeah, so we were being a little stealth. So I'd like to stand, if I may. In honor of this being Rita's last day, or last Board of Selectmen meeting, we have a proclamation that we would like to read from you, from the Board of Selectmen. So the Town of Lakeville, Massachusetts proclamation. Whereas Rita Garbutt has been a resident of the Town of Lakeville for her entire life, and whereas Rita Garbutt began her career serving the residents of Lakeville, working part-time in town hall, doing clerical work. In nineteen ninety-three, Rita ran for the treasurer-tax collector position, but lost to the incumbent, James Norris. And upon Mr. Norris's early retirement, Rita was appointed by the Board of Selectmen as the treasurer-tax collector in ninety-three, and then was elected as the treasurer-tax collector. And whereas in March of two thousand, due to the resignation of the town administrator, Rita was appointed as an acting town administrator and served in that capacity until November of two thousand, when she was appointed as the town administrator.[1536.36]